Oh. That must be me. I must be the big box Zoom.
Hello, Mr. Nelson. It sounds like you got your camera working.
Well, I don't know if it is or not.
This is Jeff. Yeah, I'm on.
Okay, I've got Bill, Carol, Jeff. I did have Dave a while ago, but...
He stepped out for a second.
Yeah, well, and Bill, you just keep jumping around. You was in the middle of the screen now. You're down in the lower right-hand corner.
I'm just keep pushing buttons.
Are they making room for you, Bill?
Huh?
Are they making room for you?
I think so.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you, ma'am.
This is Brittany, and I'm also here. I'm the 209 number.
Oh, crap.
Very good. And, yeah, and just so you know... Yeah, I'm going to audio. I've got my, I've got the agenda pulled up on the small screen.
Is this where Shauna?
Tablet.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, is this, I don't know if I'm supposed to announce myself. This is Shauna Dodd from 706 Caroline Street.
Right, we'll, we'll be calling on you shortly.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I got a full picture of you, Bill.
You do?
Uh-huh.
Do I need my hair did?
You wasn't there long enough for me to even look at your hair. You're gone now.
There, on my back.
Nope.
I don't see.
But I've got a little red light up. There you are. A little red light up here says, "Recording."
Oh.
With 6 o'clock, we'll have to call this meeting to order. And I think we have a full house. I think we've got Carol, Bill, Bill, Jeff, and Brittany. I think we're all here. Okay, the, we'll start off with the Visitor Citizens Forum. Now, I want to emphasize something here. You're going to be limited to three minutes. We do not engage in a conversation here. We simply listen to you. In order to engage in a conversation, it has to be part of the agenda. Okay, and we'll start with, now, Ms. Shauna, are you wanting to talk to us?
Uh, no, just looking for an approval, honestly.
Okay, well, we'll get around to that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there anybody else? Dave, have you talked to anybody that wants to have something to say at this point?
I have not.
Okay.
Dave?
Uh... Then we'll, can, we'll just go on and start with item number one. I, even though I've got a few things I want to say, and I'll put it down off to the end of the meeting. It's not going to be, I don't think, that long. Item number one, consideration and possible action regarding a regular meeting minutes of July 7, 2020.
This is Jeff Waddell, and I will make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of July 7 as presented.
And this is Carol. I will second those minutes.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the regular meeting minutes of July 7, 2020. Is there any further discussion? If not, please indicate your favor of approving these minutes by saying aye.
Aye.
This is Bill. Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Was there any opposition? The ayes have it. Motion passes. Item number two, consideration and possible action regarding exterior home repainting for 706 Caroline in the Historic Preservation District as submitted by owners Jeff and Shauna Dodd.
Good evening, Commissioners. Having your packet the information that the owners had supplied to me, I took the liberty of kind of putting them into there to kind of group things, but at the time, the submissions were due. They had narrowed down their color choices to a couple of schemes. I do apologize, the website just didn't have any better options in terms of the colors. But you see in red font or text on the screen there, you know, kind of what their wall color, trim color, and door colors were. And the owners, again, are here, so you can ask any questions that you have of them.
Yeah, this is Bill Simpson. What, what colors are your main, is your main priority?
Um, the majority of, like, the walls. The trim needs to be refinished and repainted, but the house itself is the priority.
I understand, but what color is your, is what, what color do you... I guess what I'm saying is, we're, we're here to approve, not to pick. So, you know, I like all the colors, but what, I mean, which, which colors do you prefer?
Um, it's not, honestly, the preference is one is my husband and one is me. My husband is more comfortable with the black and white. And I like the navy, so I submitted both to see if I could get an approval. I'm comfortable with either, either choice.
When you say navy, you wanted the house, the whole house painted in that navy color?
Yes, that's what I was considering. The, the house would be navy and the trim would be white, and the front door would be yellow.
Have you seen a house painted that dark color before?
I have.
It wasn't too overbearing?
Um, my opinion is no. But, you know, I, y'all are, I, I understand. I think that this is a big consideration, and I know it would be something different. I think that it's a beautiful combination, but, you know, y'all are the approvers.
And I have to ask, the yellow is, is as bright as it is on my computer? Or what, is it a lighter shade of yellow?
It should be a lighter shade, more of a canary.
Yeah, this is Jeff. And yes, I, I think both combinations could work. I, I, that was my only question was on the daisy on the door. My only question was if it was a real bright, bright, it would, you know, really pop, which, you know, there's nothing wrong with, with a nice contrast. I guess my only concern was, was how, you know, how bright is that yellow? I, I think if it was more of a, you know, middle, mid-tone canary, would be fine with the navy, with the navy blue and the white trim. But yeah, that was my only question on, on the door.
Yeah, I, and if it came across as, like, super bright, I, I would have it as a more mild.
Yes. Because you're, you're looking for a nice contrast, but, but just not too, too bright, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and I, I've seen that done where you do have a dark color, like, I mean, it's truly a, the house, the siding would be, it's a navy blue?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then, of course, the trim is, is the, just checking on that. The snowbound is, that's a pretty fairly white, white?
Yes, a bright white. Yes, sir.
Mm-hmm, okay. Well, just for, just, I guess my only comment is that both, I think both combinations could work. And like we were given in our packet, we just can't mix them up to different, we, we could approve, i- if we talk about it as a group, we could approve either one as long as they are those combinations that you're showing.
It would, yes, sir. It would only be a white house with black trim and a blue door, or a navy house with white trim and a yellow door. I, I wouldn't switch it up.
Well, that's, we understand your dilemma. I can remember our last house we built, it took us a while. The wife and I had little discussions on that for probably two weeks, so we understand that.
And like I said, my husband's more comfortable with the white house, but, you know, I figured I'd submit.
Hey, Dave?
Yes, sir.
Nelson, Dave, I just, my laptop's going out. I'm just, I'm back off. I lost my phone now.
Uh, so this is your cell phone? This is 832?
Yes.
Got you. Yes, sir.
I will save if I have.
Maybe we lost Nelson as well, and we somehow lost Nelson on the...
We, we did lose power here, and Nelson lives two houses down. We lost power for just about 10 seconds. It might have been enough to knock it out.
Yeah, I think we, I think we dropped Nelson off. I don't know if just to call him from his cell phone if...
Now, Ms. Dodd, your house is green now, is that right? With the red front door?
Yes, ma'am.
And the white trimming?
Yes, ma'am.
So going to the navy would only be a few shades darker, in other words? Don't you think that if I, if I went to, like, an olive green, that would be darker than what you have now? So going to the navy is quite a bit darker, I guess?
Yes, it would be, because it's a pale green now.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Personally, I think it would, it would look nice. I just don't know about that yellow door, though. I'm concerned about it being like a fluorescent yellow.
Okay.
When you got on the blue, with the dark blue, would the yellow be, I don't know?
I, I would make sure that it's not bright. I would, I would lighten it up if that, if that one's too bright, coming up too bright.
Yeah, on the screen, it's, it's pretty bright.
On the screen, it's, yeah. Either way you went would be fine. I don't know that we should choose for you.
No, I can do that with my husband.
So, so I think what our motion would be is that we could go with either, depending on which one you chose. But I wouldn't sway from either one of them at all, other than the yellow. I would make sure that it's a lighter yellow, not that deep gold.
Ms. Carol, if I can add just one thing real quick, and I apologize for interrupting, but just looking at the packet and seeing your concern on there, some of that may be due to the scanning of the agenda pack and just, you know, it's photo that's been, that was, you know, that was a computer photo that was then printed and then scanned.
Right.
You know, with an emphasis kind of on keeping the file size reasonable. So I, I would just say that it's, you know, very likely a scam thing and not a truly a school bus yellow.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Here, that's exactly what it looks like on my computer, is a school bus yellow, and I'm like, oh, my gosh. If, I love blue and gold together, don't get me wrong, but I'm not sure that is gold.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I, yes, yeah, I think part of it's just the transfer of the colors. But yeah, I think with a little, little gold in it, it would work.
So is everybody, is everybody there? Brittany, are you there?
Yeah, I, I actually appreciate both color schemes and the palette, colors, whatever. I, I like them both. So I would approve both of them, and they can choose either or.
Oh, good. Okay, all right. And is Bill back?
Oh, no.
He is. We're waiting on Nelson is in the process of getting back on, so he asked if we would, hang on one second, and he should be here in just a, just a minute or so, if we could just give a quick pause for him.
Yeah, I, I think it was due to that short power outage.
Yeah, he had told Susan that he was still out of power, so...
But Bill is on now?
Oh, my phone, yes.
Oh. If, if I make the motion to go either color scheme, are you comfortable with that? If she pays attention to that yellow door, if she goes with that one?
Yeah, that's fine with me, as long as, like, you know, it's the, the same, it's one scheme or the other, not the two mixed together.
No, no, sir, it won't be.
Right, right.
Yeah, I'll follow that.
Hey, I think Nelson may be headed over to your house.
Okay.
It's for when all the neighbors are, are active, and then they can all just share resources when needed.
Okay, I see him coming down the street. Here he comes.
Okay.
Bring it on in, neighbor.
Oh, my gosh, bless the...
Oh, this happened last time.
Yes, it did.
Yes. I know, I know. We lost it for, yeah, yeah. It was enough to throw it. Yep. Okay, I'm gonna put you on speakerphone. It'll work here. Go ahead. Okay, we're on speakerphone. Here we go. Come on down.
Okay, is everybody back?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful sudden link and internet.
Yeah.
Everything's clear here, and it, all it had to do was blink and shut everything down.
Well, Nelson, we've been discussing the two color schemes for Ms. Dodd's house, and I would like to make a motion that approves both color schemes and let the owner decide between the two, but not mix the two options or add a new color.
That sounds like a good start. So we have, you have a motion?
Hey, Jeff, I think it may be your speakerphone that's giving us feedback.
Okay, let me plug the headphones back in. Put the headphones back in. And I've got the speakerphone off.
Can Nelson hear?
Put that in your right ear. Okay, we're, we're sharing the headphones. Can you hear us?
Y'all got your mask on?
Yeah.
Okay, we're good. Go ahead. So Carol made a motion?
And I will read it back if I can, just to make sure I've got it right. Ms. Carol moved to approve both color schemes as submitted and let the owner decide which one, but not mix the two and not add new colors. Did I capture it?
Yes, sir.
Excellent.
This is Brittany, and I will second that motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on those two color schemes. The owner's going to make a choice. Do we have any further discussion from the commission? Okay, those in favor of approving the two colors as submitted indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? The ayes have it. Okay. That's good.
You want to go back to the agenda?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
Yes, ma'am, enjoy painting.
Thank you. Drive by and see who won.
Oh, I will, I will.
Okay. Item number three. Now, that's...
Oh, this is the minutes.
That's the minutes.
I'm gonna go back.
Yeah.
Here we go.
Item number three, consideration and possible action regarding a sign application for the Gypsy Buffalo slash the Rustic Leopard located at 312 John A. Butler Street in the Historic Preservation District as submitted by owner Kimberly Turner.
Miss Nurse, you have in your packet the information on it. You probably remember the Urban Trends sign when it came before you a number of months ago, and the business owner's here to answer any questions that you may have.
Hey, Dave?
Yes, sir.
Can you, can you hold that picture up?
I tell you what, let me share my screen real quick, and if that will, let me see if this allows...
There we go. Okay, thank you, because I don't have one.
Yep, so if you see this here, I've gone, I've, you know, kind of gone down to the images now.
Yeah, I've got it.
Number one, do you know what the sign is made out of? Is it like the one that Urban Trends had?
Ms. Kimberly, I know that she and I had talked about that, but I'll let her address you guys directly.
It is a vinyl coating that is placed over the existing sign that's there, that's on the wall.
And it is lighted?
Yes, ma'am, it's lighted from behind.
But it's going to be attached to it. It's not going to be hanging on the wall and, and...
No, ma'am, the light... No, ma'am. The vinyl, it adheres to the plastic piece that's already existing there. So it's lighted from behind, and the vinyl is just, it's, it adheres to the white piece that Urban Trends has actually written on.
Okay, so it's like a wrap?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
All right.
And I will say the blue in your picture is not as dark. It's more of a lighter bluish mint color. Like, on the last one, they said because of the scanning and stuff, it kind of gives it more of a blue color, but it's more of a minty blue.
Not quite as bold as it is on the screen?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so you have it like a mint blue, and then you have the black and the pink, and then the white down at the bottom, home where the wild ones shop?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Are those letters very big? Do you know how big they are, the little ones, the whole?
Three and a half inches, I believe.
Okay.
But your slide, your slide will fit in that frame of the Urban Trends one, okay?
Yes, it, it will completely cover the white on the Urban Trends sign.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there any kind of lighting?
There's lighting from behind the sign that's already existing there from the previous sign.
Well, I'd make a motion to approve, but I don't have my piece of paper to, for the address.
Okay. I can, I will second that motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the sign application for the Gypsy Buffalo Rustic Leopard at 312 John A. Butler Street as shown on the drawings with a little lighter blue.
Kimberly, can I ask you, are, do you have the packet, like, with that dark blue color? And then you see the Urban Trends sign below it. Is the minty blue color that you're describing, like the color of the sky on that Urban Trends sign or picture?
Um, no. I, I actually, I don't know if y'all can see this. I have a, I have a piece of the vinyl that the blue is actually of. I don't know if you can see this or not. That's more of the color.
And it's more of a, it's like a turquoise almost in the, like, yeah. Okay.
I'm getting on my computer to try to see it. Hang on.
Uh, yes, this is Jeff. I just wanted to confirm that Nelson is not back. You, you lost us there for a minute in the beginning of this discussion. Apparently, the color came through a little brighter than the reality, but good discussion. Sounds good. Can you hear us now?
Hello?
Yeah, yeah. I can hear you.
All right.
Stand for it. Roger.
So we're still good with the motion?
Yeah, that's what, while we're setting on a motion right now, waiting on a second.
Yep.
Brittany, are you, Brittany was asking a question about the color. Brittany, did you get...
Yeah, that, that, that was like my only reservation, was like that, that bright blue color.
Yeah.
I was trying to get on Zoom to see what, what the actual turquoise looked like, but I cannot launch it for some reason. But generally, I mean, if there's consensus that, you know, it's appropriate, then, then, then I'm, I'm okay with that as well, so...
Okay, go ahead and second if you want to.
I will make, I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a motion, motion and a second for approving the sign of the Gypsy Buffalo, the Rusty Leopard. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? Eyes have it, motion carries. Okay, let's go back to the.
Yeah, go back to you. Agenda?
There. Okay, next on the list here is commission inquiry. Dave, was there anything that you wanted to add tonight?
There's, unless you guys have a specific question, I don't think anything that's so definite that, but I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Okay. Well, I'd like to say, this has been an interesting couple of weeks. We've had some citizen input about things that went on in our last meeting, and I found it a little concerning, that I, I consider it a privilege to serve with a good group of folks on this commission, and I don't think any of us have been tricked into anything. We discuss it until we're blue in the face, as much as these computers will let us talk about it, since we're not in person anymore, which I think is a shame, and I'll be glad when this is over, because I'm, I'm big on reading expressions and body English, and you can't do that on a computer. But we need to have everybody that has business before this commission understand we have rules, we have city ordinances, we have protocols that has to be followed. It has to be followed. I cannot overemphasize that enough. We're gonna follow the rules. Those that don't, they suffer the consequences, because we're, we may be a small town, but we're not pushovers, because we follow the rules. And I don't think anybody would ask us to do anything less, certainly not more, but certainly not less. And that's all I have to say. From, from this day forward, just remember, we got rules, and we've got protocol, and the ones to ask the question is our city staff, and if they need to fall back on legal questions, they've got that too. So that's all I'm gonna say about what happened over these last couple of weeks. Does anybody else, would anybody else like to say something? Bill?
Nelson, I think you, you put it pretty bluntly to what my feelings are. You know, like you said, there's rules or ordinances. The city's not that hard to get along with. We're not, we're not the city of Houston, where you have to go down there, down and take a ticket late line, get another ticket late line, get another ticket late line. Dave and everybody at the city are pretty accessible. So there's, I don't believe there's any excuse for anybody not going through the protocol.
Very good.
I never felt like I was tricked into making my decision on any of that that was on the agenda that night.
Oh, no. I don't think we were tricked.
I don't think so either.
No. We, we made decisions on what was presented to us. What's up there, the majority of it was not presented to us.
Yes, and we were very specific about coming back for, to do with the parking lot. Stated in the minutes, I should.
Yep.
There are other items on there, too, that were done over, over above us.
Yeah, and, and, you know, just taking a look at the big picture, I just want to make the comment that we've all seen times when something gets done, and you ask for permission later. And that's, you know, that's kind of a cute little expression, and it does happen, we probably all have done it sometime in our life, but we certainly don't want to make a habit of it, and we don't want to have that impression that, that that's okay. You know, sometimes it's just some mind thing, and we clear it up. But I think we just need to keep in mind the good communication and move forward. But I agree, you just, you know, that's why we have procedures.
Yeah, I know Dave and Richard and the, the city have a lot of things to sort through on that, the, what's going on up there. So we just hope for the best and we can get through it.
Well, I'm glad these meetings are recorded, and it's a matter of record. So if somebody can't come along and say, well, that's not what was said, because everything we're saying is being recorded and will be a matter of record. And that, to me, that's the way it should be.
Yeah, and I just want, since we are, and, you know, this has been recorded video, I just, one thing I would like to say is, you know, like, like Nelson was saying, you know, we're, we're pretty easy to get along with, as long as everything has followed the rules. And just, just do not take our generosity as a weakness.
Well said. On one other subject I'd like, we've talked, this has come up a few times, but in the future, David, maybe we need to put something on the agenda for banners. We're seeing more banners, and we had seen very specific two weeks ago about one new business that was questionable, because the person wasn't there, but rerunning the impression was a hard sign, but it's not. So I think we need to do something, I don't know if we need to have a meeting, workshop with the city, but look at all the banners, and they should come down, and we may need to do some kind of a group effort to make that happen.
I can certainly bring some information back to the commission on kind of what the city's process would look like in doing that, and I'll be happy to bring it to the next meeting.
I find a great deal of reluctance to pass anything, be it a sign or paint color, anything, that if, that when it comes before this commission, the people that's asked for this, if, if there's not, if they're not in, in present at the time, then we need to table whatever their request is.
I see.
They need to be present. I mean, if we take them, we're all volunteers. If we take the time out of our schedule, whether we're working or whether we're retired, it doesn't, it's still our time. If they consider it important enough to bring it to us, they need to be present. So in case there's a question, we can ask, ask it right then, instead of having to table it for 30 days.
And I can certainly let the applicants know that, that their attendance is required. I know who.
I, I think it's perfect. Thank you, Mr. Dave.
Yes, sir.
Okay, if there's not anything else, our next list is executive session, and I think there is no items for this at this time. So next up would be, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
We had nobody talking tonight?
No, apparently not.
Okay.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, and a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second to adjourn. Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you all.
Thank you, everyone. Y'all have a wonderful evening.